August twenty first, meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board to order. We have quite a few items on the agenda tonight, so on the chair's option, I'm gonna move straight to the roll call.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Here.
Mr. Rockline?
Here.
Ms. Frances?
Here.
Ms. Early?
Here.
And let's do the pledge of allegiance real quick, and then we'll get into the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item four, approval of minutes. Looks like we're approving the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three minutes. I need a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion if there's any comments on it.
I'll go ahead and move to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Frances?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. That brings us to item number five, the quasi judicial announcement and swearing of speakers. Would our attorney lead us in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. The applications before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board are quasi judicial in nature. In a quasi judicial proceeding, the board's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the board. The board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application in the applicable code sections. If the evidence demonstrates that the applicant meets the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to approve the application. If the evidence demonstrates that the applicant does not meet the criteria in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required to deny the application. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the application under consideration. Any board members who have disclosures such as ex parte communications or conflicts of interest, please make your disclosures at the beginning of the hearing. The following is the established procedure for this quasi judicial hearing. First, the city will present the application, and the applicant will have the opportunity to ask questions and cross examine the city and the city witnesses. Then, the applicant will be given the opportunity to present their testimony and evidence for this hearing. Then, any proponents of the application and opponents of the application will be given the opportunity to speak. After all testimony and evidence is presented, the public hearing will be closed for the board's deliberation and decision on this matter. At this time, anybody who wishes to speak, please stand to take the oath. Raise your right hand. Do you all swear to tell the truth on the matters here before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board this evening?
I do.
Please remember to state your name, address, and indicate that you've been sworn prior to proceeding with your testimony. Chairman?
Thank you. That brings us to item number six on our agenda, application twenty-three dash five-nine, resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight. This is a quasi judicial item, and it addresses site plan approval for property located at four seventeen South Pinellas Avenue. Do we have a staff presentation, please?
Yes, Ali Keen, senior planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. This application is for site plan review for the Kekeless Forest property. It's under resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight. The property is approximately point one-one acres in size. The property is located within the special area plan, therefore it's regulated by the SMART code. Specifically, it has a future land use designation of CRD, Community of redevelopment District, and it's in the South Pinellas Avenue Character District. The current transect zone is the T-five-A, South Pinellas Ave Zone, and the applicants are here tonight proposing to put a second story addition on the existing building. The second story will be utilized as a residential unit and office space for the property owner. They will also have a small first story addition, just over four hundred square feet, which will basically be an entryway and staircase to get to the second floor addition. The project requires a total of three parking spaces, and those are existing on-site in the rear that are accessed by the alley, and it does meet the code requirement. And they are proposing landscaping along the Pinellas Ave frontage. The property is outlined in yellow here on the screen. Again, this property, as well as all the surrounding areas, is within the special area plan. This property is in the T-five-A zone, which is the dark orange color along Pinellas Avenue. To the east of the site is the T-four-B zone, which is a residential industrial office zone, and then further west, there's the T-four-D zone. This is a look at the proposed site plan. The Pinellas Ave frontage is over here. The alley is along the rear of the property on this side. The existing building footprint is outlined in orange on the screen, and the area outlined in blue is the first floor addition. Again, that's gonna be accommodating an entryway and staircase, and I believe a small half bath. This is a look at the proposed landscaping plan. In this transect zone, landscaping is not necessarily required unless there's open parking. It's used to screen parking. In this case, the parking, which is in the rear of the property, is fully screened by the building. However, the applicant is proposing landscaping along the Pinellas Ave frontage, including a tree and some shrubs along the front. This is a look at the front elevation. And this is a rendering of that front elevation, and just for comparison, this is the existing structure image here. And they are proposing to keep the front wall and fence area along the street frontage. They provided floor plans for your review. The area outlined in blue again is the addition on the first store, first story. The ground floor is still be utilized by the florists, and that's not proposed to change. And then when looking at the upper story, again, it's gonna be residential living space as well as some office space for the property owner. The review criteria for a site plan are shown here on the screen. First is consistency with the comprehensive plan. The application is found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically the intent of the South Pinellas Ave Character District, which encourages mixed-use development with retail ground floor and residential or office uses on the upper stories. Consistency with the land development code, in this case, the SMART code. It is found to be in compliance with all applicable requirements of the SMART code, and we have outlined those in a detailed table in the staff report. Number three is consistency with the concurrency management system. The project can be served by existing city facilities, and the proposed impacts of the project are not expected to adversely affect the city's ability or their facilities to serve the property. And lastly, is consistency with building codes, and the project is required to and expected to be able to meet all applicable building codes. With that, staff does recommend approval of resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-eight of the site plan proposal. We do have two conditions, which are our standard conditions that we typically have. One being site construction plans being consistent with the approved site plan, and the second is the site plan expires one year from the effective date unless they've applied for a building permit. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I do have a question. With the parking requirements with this added square footage, how does that impact our, the parking requirement for that building?
So, the existing retail space in the park, or in the SMART code exempts retail spaces that are less than fifteen hundred square feet in area, and that's net retail space. So, the retail portion of the project doesn't require any parking. The residential requires two parking spaces. And then, just for clarity, I didn't really point it out. Yeah, they're in the rear here. They have two spaces here, and they also have a space here that could either be for the owner or an employee.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Just briefly, maybe I missed it. Is there parking out front right now?
I believe there is street parking. I can't, I can't think if it's right in front of the property. I have a picture.
Does it stay?
Yes, yeah, it's parallel parking on the street, and that's within the city's right of way. There will be no change to that. Yeah, there's a couple spaces right there.
Any further questions?
No.
Seeing none, would the applicant like to say a few words? It's, it's your call.
So, Andrew Pavlis, four seventeen South Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. So, I'm an architect as well, so I'm the one designing it, and I'll be submitting the permit drawing support, so. I don't know, we're excited to do it. We might make a little changes to it. We were in Greece last month, and we got some more ideas. So, but we'll make sure like the overhangs aren't over the property line and things like that. It'll be all to code. So, yeah, if you have any questions.
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
First of all, Kekeless Forests have served this community for a long time, and they've served it well, so thank the family for that. And I, when I saw the picture, it reminded me of Greece, so.
It looks nice.
In any event, that was just my comment.
All right.
I think half of Tarpon is in Greece now anyways.
She says, you know, she said it was dad's vision to always put a second story on there, so.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll open the public comment portion of the meeting. Are there any members of the public here to speak in favor or against the proposal? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for consideration. I need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve application number, let me get my glasses on, twenty-three dash seventy-four under resolution twenty, zero, two, zero, twenty-three dash twenty-eight, and I recommend approval.
I'll second that.
Do we have any commission discussion?
I just think it's a nice use of space, and I think enhances that corridor coming into Tarpon, because coming in from that side into Tarpon Springs sometimes is an eyesore, and making those type of improvements, I think just, it just enhances the southern corridor coming into Tarpon.
And it's very much in accord with the comp plan, yeah. All right, can we have a roll call then?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Frances?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to application twenty-three dash seventy-four, resolution twenty-two-three twenty-seven, also quasi judicial, conditional use approval for property located at one-twenty-two West Cedar Street, Lot eleven. Do we have a staff presentation, please?
Ali Keen, again. All right. This is a conditional use request under resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-seven. The property is located at one-twenty-two West Cedar Street, specifically on Lot eleven. The property size is just about three thousand five hundred and fifty square feet in area. The current future land use designation is CG Commercial General, and the current zoning is WD-one, which is the waterfront development district. The applicants are proposing to construct a single-family dwelling on this property. Single-family dwellings are conditional use within the WD-one zoning district. The dwelling is proposed to be two stories, with the majority of the first story being a garage parking under the main living space. The property is located within a floodplain and is required to be elevated a certain height above base flood elevation, but they are proposing to have a small portion of the ground floor, about four hundred and fifty square feet, be living space, and will be elevated to meet FEMA requirements. But again, the majority of the living space will be on the upper story, which is just under fifteen hundred square feet in size. The property is outlined in yellow here on the screen. Again, it's in the WD-one zoning district. All of the light blue properties here on the screen are in the WD-one district. The property has residential multifamily zoning to the north and east, and across the street on Cedar Street. And there's R-sixty, which is one and two-family residential zoning across Athens. This is just looking at an aerial shot of the property. It is a vacant lot. It's a historic, historically platted piece of property. The applicants do own, and it's their primary residence, next door to the east. All of the properties within the immediate area are single-family residences, except for, I believe, these two are commercial properties, how they're developed. This is the proposed site layout. The applicants went before the Board of Adjustment back in April of this year to ask two items. The first was recognition of the historic lot as a non-conforming lot of record to determine if it's buildable. The board did determine that it was a non-conforming lot of record, and it was buildable. And they also requested approval of a reduced setbacks. They were asked for sixteen feet from the front and ten from the rear. Those both were approved, and if they were not approved, they would have been required a minimum of twenty feet from the front and the rear. Excuse me, and the proposed lot layout that you see here is consistent with that variance approval. Typically, with a conditional use request, you are required to have a site plan application submitted with that request. This is a little unique, because single-family residences do not require site plan approval. They just go through the building permit process. But the applicant did provide floor plans and elevations for your consideration as a part of their application. These are their proposed floor plans, and just for clarity, this is, this is the front at the top. You can see the ground floor. This is primarily the garage space. There are some steps that go up to meet the FEMA requirements, and then the small back portion here is where some living space is located. And then the upper floor is the main living space, and it accommodates two bedrooms in an open floor plan. They also have a proposed open lanai that has a covered balcony above the garage. These are the proposed elevations provided by the applicant. Again, the main entrance is from the front with the garage accessing the ground floor, and then they also have a side entrance, I believe, to get up to the second story as well. This is the front elevation, the rear elevation, and then these are your side elevations. They did provide some projections covering above the front door, as well as the balcony overhangs. Slightly on the second story, it provides some depth to the facade of the building. This property, again, is in WD-one zoning. That zoning district is intended really to be tourist-oriented development. It really was the city's, I would say, first mixed-use development that we had established. The property has been in this zoning since nineteen seventy-six. Back at that time, single-family residences were also conditional use requests at that time. The property is, like I said, more geared towards mixed-use, tourist development, commercial. The uses provided here on the screen are what are provided, are permitted by right. So, that includes commercial off-street parking, eating establishments, emergency service facilities, hotels, outdoor cafes, markets, mixed use with residential in the upper story, ground floor, commercial, retail establishments, and wet slip marinas, which obviously wouldn't be the case here. But based off the historic size of the property, being under four thousand square feet in area, and really the context of the area, it's just not as conducive to commercial development, which is permitted by right. Prior to the special area plan being adopted in two thousand and eleven, a majority of the area, well, all of the area that's in this special area plan, this area in gray, was all with the WD-one zoning district. Once that plan was adopted, they designated the boundary of where we intended mixed use and more walkable development and commercial residential mixture would be accommodated in the future, and that boundary was north of the subject property. Today, within the area, there's only twenty-one parcels that remain in the WD-one zoning district, and they're outlined here on the screen in blue, well, they're in black dotted line. Most of those properties, eleven of them, are single-family residences. A majority were built in the nineteen twenties, with the exception of the property next door to the subject site. That property had a home, I believe, that was already constructed and moved to the property in two thousand and seven, and they did go through the conditional use process to allow the single-family residents. There are eight vacant properties within the twenty-one parcels, and then two, which I believe are these two here, are commercial, and I believe that they're unoccupied. Again, kind of focusing on the context of the area. In this immediate area, it really is predominantly single-family residential. The construction dates really vary. There's a lot of properties that are developed in the early nineteen hundreds, but there's ones that have been developed within the last couple of years, in the twenty twenties. But I would say a majority of the residential structures were built in the nineteen twenties. The non-residential development is mostly concentrated along Pinellas Avenue, and then the southern portion of Athens Street down here, and then obviously the sponge docks to the north of the property. The property is in the Greettown National Register Historic District, additional cultural property. This district does recognize the cultural history of the area, but does not have established specific design regulations, and it is comprised of a variety of different building types and uses. This is a site photo of the property. This is standing on Cedar Street. This is looking east along Cedar Street. This is the home that, when two thousand and seven, was moved to this location. This is looking west along Cedar Street. This is looking southeast at the Athens and Cedar Street intersection. And then this is looking west along Acacia Street, and the property is right here behind this structure. This is your review criteria for conditional use. First is conformance of land development code. With the exception of the approved setback deviations, the project does meet all applicable standards of the land development code. It will also be required to meet all building, fire, and FEMA requirements as well. Number two, the proposed project is in a predominantly single-family residential area. The smaller historic lot size is more conducive, as I mentioned, to a single-family residence rather than a commercial use, which would have to accommodate parking on-site, as well as large buffer areas between the adjacent residential uses. The property's been in the WD-one zoning district since nineteen seventy-six, which at that time, it was expected to develop more mixed use in that area, but we have found that it's really remained predominantly single-family. And then the adoption of the special area plan did better define that mixed-use area to the north. Number three, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This property is in the commercial general future land use category. However, it does allow residential uses on properties that are less than five acres in size. So, it's only, well, it's less than four thousand square feet in size, so it does meet that requirement. Number four, the use will not adversely impact historical or environmental resources. The property is not in a proposed environmentally sensitive site. The subject property is in the Greettown Historic District, and it does recognize the cultural history of the area, but does not establish the specific design regulations for new development. Number five, we are not expecting this to adversely affect the adjoining property values. Again, it's in a predominantly single-family area, and a single-family structure on a small lot is more conducive to that area as opposed to commercial development. Number six, the use will not adversely impact the city's capacity to serve the facility. It's served by existing facilities, and there's no need to extend facilities to serve the development. Number seven, the project does represent efficient and orderly development by utilizing an existing infill lot, and it's served by existing infrastructure. And lastly, it's not expected to adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. Based on that analysis, staff does recommend approval of resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-seven for the conditional use for a single-family home. We do have one condition. Typically, site plans would have one year to obtain their, or to apply for a building permit. In this case, we're recommending that a building permit for the construction of the single-family dwelling be obtained within one year of the effective date. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I have a question for legal. Leave that to the picture.
This one right here?
I own all that property that's directly across. Would that, would that be a conflict for me?
That does not constitute a conflict of interest with this application, no. Not under chapter one twelve.
Okay, then I do have a question. I noticed on the floor plan, it had living quarters, complete living quarters on the first floor. Would that, because it's single-family, is that preclude them from having, making that the bottom floor rental, making it multifamily?
So, so there's, there's two different ways. Right now, they're not proposing it to be a full separate unit. They're not having a full kitchen in that location. If they wanted to change that in the future, one, they could potentially use it as an accessory dwelling unit, because it meets the size requirements. However, the main living space would have to be owner occupied. The other option, to use it as an actual, like, tourist rental or an Airbnb-type use, that requires conditional use approval. They'd have to come back before the board to utilize that. But right now, it's just additional living space.
All right, thank you.
If I may?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're offering the city's file on this matter for the board's consideration as evidence, and your credentials are on file with the city, correct? Okay. In looking at this, I know that in the R-sixty and the RM, they have limitations on the rentals, like the forty-two-day provision, or forty-five days, something like that, right?
Six weeks, yes.
Six weeks, yes. That, does that apply in the WD-one district?
Yes.
So, so it's the same, because part of why I'm asking is I was kind of curious why it didn't just go through a rezoning rather than the conditional use.
So, in this case, because the property So in this case, because the property has a conditional use option, it seemed more appropriate to go through that avenue as opposed to fully rezoning the property. It also would not be, there's no zoning district that really the lot itself could conform to. It's a nonconforming lot of record that was recognized by Board of Adjustment, but we don't have any, I think R-60 has the smallest lot size, which is 5,000 square feet, so they probably would have to get variances on top of that, I would believe.
The other question then, along those same lines regarding the short-term rental issue, is there anything in the code that precludes them from putting a kitchen or a kitchenette or something else like that in that unit?
So yes, and it really comes down to kind of a stove is the main deciding factor. And if a stove were put into that location, they would have to either meet the requirements for an accessory dwelling unit, which that's, you know, maximum 600 square feet. They're below that, if just looking at the ground floor area. Has to be on the same utilities as the primary residence, that's probably the case here. But the biggest thing is the upper story would have to be owner-occupied. Based on my conversations with the applicant, and they expand on that, they're utilizing this really for their family. They have a large family that visits.
I have a question for Ms. Kardashian. We've run into this kind of situation before, and I don't recall the outcome, but in the historic district, since there are no specific criteria for development, do we have the ability to place any requirements as far as what the structure looks like to relate in some small way to the context of the neighborhood?
You don't if it's not currently written into your code. And when you adopt those design criteria, there is some stringent structure that has to go into how you do that and how you apply it if it's not already part of your historic district. So you can't put design criteria on it. However, you can put conditions on things like its specific use as a residential property in this district because that is the condition that you're granting. You're allowing a residential use in what would otherwise be a commercially-zoned property. So you can place conditions on the property that are related to that.
Any other questions for staff?
I just had one question about, was any, were there any notices sent out?
Yes, we sent out mailed notices within 500 feet.
Okay, and we didn't get any emails or anything?
Didn't get anything written, no.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, I do. My name is Tom Zabett. I live at 122 West Cedar Street in Tarpon Springs, Florida. My wife and I live there. We thank you for taking the time to review this. We purchased the property back in 2017 and did quite a bit of research beforehand to make sure that the property could have two dwellings on it, even though it was one parcel. And we were told by the planning and zoning director at that time that we could. And so we're pursuing this and we're trying to build this second home. Like Ellie said, it's mainly for our personal use. We are not excluding anything that we can do as far as renting it out, but we would follow all the guidelines and zoning and permits and everything to make this happen. So the current proposal here, the lower unit is, the living quarters downstairs is less than 500 feet, it's like 440 feet. The upstairs is about 1,420 square feet. And then you have the big, open porch extending out in the front to give it some relief and to give us a design. We're going to probably extend that out about two feet from the bottom floor, just to give it more relief. The garage door that you saw there is 10-foot, it's not going to be 10-foot. There's design changes that have to be made here. That's going to come down, the garage door is going to come down two feet. We'll probably, from the front door, we're probably going to have the roof extend from side to side all the way across the whole garage. It won't be just over the door like that. And like I said, the garage door is going to come down, so aesthetically, it'll add a lot to the structure. The garage, the doors on the side of the building, one is for access to the garage, so you can go in and out the garage. The other one is access, so you have a fire exit to the back unit so people can get out if there's a fire. So that's what that back door is for. But if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I do, without referring back to the little drawings, I mean, is the living quarters that you have designed downstairs, is that, that's completely separate from the garage? There's no access, excuse me, to the garage from that unit?
No, there is a door. There is a door for, you know, for exit, for safety, for them to exit out of about the middle of that room. It's basically just one room with a bathroom. That's it. It's got a sink, you know, refrigerator.
For like a studio?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
You're welcome. So, you know, to the extent that we approve this, and you know, for my purposes, you know, this is brought before us as a single-family home, not a multifamily location.
Yes.
You know, and so to the extent that that is a condition that we place on this property, that's something that would not cause you any agita?
No, it would not. The, you know, like I said, if we are able to do a long-term lease for rental and that's acceptable, fine, that might be an option for us upstairs. The downstairs unit is mainly for my family. We have 12 siblings between the two of us, and we need more room. So that's what that mainly will be used for. That will not be rented out at all.
So is downstairs for the part of the family that you do not like?
No, the garages. But also, I wanted to mention too, Cedar Street does not have any commercial businesses all along the whole street. We would be the first ones. I think that's wrong. I think that, you know, back in '76, when they set up this WD-1 for this area, they wanted to extend it as far as they could, so they made sure that they had enough room for growth. It's residential there, it's not commercial. There's eight commercial properties within a six-block area of our property that are vacant, that are vacant. So I don't think the city wants more properties, commercial, that are vacant. I happen to drive up and down, and I'm sure you well know this, all of you, just drove up and down Delacanese, down Alton 19, down Tarpon Avenue. I counted 44 vacant commercial businesses. So I don't think we need another one. And with the stipulations that they set up for commercial businesses on the WD-I or I, or whatever it is, they made, they set it up for failure. I mean, they're not trying to make a business work on those parameters, you know? They restrict you as far as what you can build, how many parking spaces you need, what businesses you can put in there. You're already failing, so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I'd rather build a residential home, so that's it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, we'll go to the public comment portion of our meeting. Would anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition of the item approach the microphone and state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is John Priestley. I own the house at 121 Cedar Street, which is across the street and down the street. And we absolutely support this application. To put a commercial business in this relatively small 3,700-square-foot parallelogram of a space does not make any sense to us. As a matter of fact, the rest of the lots from their house all the way back to Pinellas, on the north side of Cedar Street, there's only two houses there, and there's three other vacant lots. And these other three houses, lots, all have the same designation, WD, whatever it is. And for us, it makes no sense to put commercial space in there. It makes perfect sense to make it residential. So my wife and I, we absolutely support the application of the Zabbitts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Tina Pukavales, 115 Athens Street. And thank you for the question that you had, Mr. Seaman, and the attorney's answer. I'm going to speak a little bit more about that. There's something else about that I would like to bring up. But first, I want to lay a little groundwork. As of course you all know, the Greektown District has been on the National Register as a historic district with an extra added layer of significance for its cultural value since 2014. And the National Register nomination details that district residential architectural styles reflect Florida vernacular cottage and house forms, especially frame vernacular. And in Greektown, they're mostly one- and two-story with steeply-sloped gable and hip roofs and exterior wood drop siding. Many of them are bungalow styles and are one and a half stories with shallow-pitched gable roofs perpendicular to the street and a porch extending across the facade. But I do want to point out that the house already built by the applicants and the one proposed do not reflect in either scale or style these local building traditions, as many of you know who can just look around and see the other buildings there. So they're planning a two-story house with a 60-by-26 foot print, as has been made clear. The bottom includes a space that is actually a separate living facility, however small, and that is not, maybe not a full kitchen, but a small kitchen with a sink and a refrigerator and everything. The top floor has two bedrooms, two baths, kitchen, living room area. Each floor has 1,560 square feet, a total of 3120 square feet, which is enormous for the Greektown area, where houses average about 2,000 square feet or less. It's on a 40-by-100-foot lot. My lot, a few blocks down Athens Street, is similar. And in my 1,100-square-foot house, that's Angeras family, just so you can know, raised three children. So this is really an enormous amount of square feet for the district. And as they have said, and is said in their application, they want to accommodate family, but also keep all other options open, which seems to mean rental, particularly for the upper floor. I don't know why we're talking, you can talk about commercial properties and everything, but really what the district needs is small, affordable bungalows, not over-large rental properties. Now, we heard what the attorney said. There are no guidelines, but as the staff has quoted regarding other properties relatively recently, the Tarpon Springs SMART Code states that, quote, "Architecture and landscape design should grow from local climate, topography, history, and building practice," unquote. Moreover, just for you to know, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act says that adverse effects on historical resources can include the introduction of incompatible visual elements. Thus, a building that does not reflect architectural norms would have an adverse effect on district integrity. So while I welcome buildings that reflect vernacular architectural scale and style, the Greektown Historic District should be protected from inappropriate development. So I disagree with item number four in today's staff review criteria, that the use will not adversely impact historical or environmental resources, whether or not there are specific regulations in place. Now, the city has begun the Greektown Historic District Vision Plan Project, which will include guidelines for development. A wise course of action would be to defer such projects so they will be in compliance with the guidelines, which hopefully will be by the end of the year, or to insist on the condition that style and scale align with vernacular architecture specified in the National Register nomination. So that's basically my point. But I also do want to note that at the last Board of Commissioners meeting discussing another property that came up in the Greektown Historic District, the staff wasn't sure who would be able to verify whether plans reflect local vernacular architecture. And I wasn't sure, and other people weren't sure, whether they meant who would be able to decide in terms of style or in terms of the board that would review this. But either possibility, either one of those reflects a systemic weakness. There is information about these vernacular styles available in books or the National Register nomination, and an adjustment or expansion of board responsibilities could easily deal with this. So, and since the Greektown District was listed almost 10 years ago, I think this is something that has been a long time coming and should happen soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment?
I have a question for legal. I mean, if that's okay. I mean, our job as far as P and Z is not architectural design, correct?
Not unless it's part of the code that you're applying. I did hear her say that there was a provision in the SMART Code that talked about the architecture and landscape and all of that, but this, the SMART Code is not applicable to this particular project, correct?
Correct, it's the Land Development Code.
So that, because that's part of that special area plan that's literally like just a couple blocks over?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And so I guess my comment would be, you know, is that, you know, you could see there's quite a few other buildable lots in that area. And until there's a design requirement, I don't know, you know, it's under our purview to require an applicant to design a house that, you know, I mean, that's my family home right there, and I own all the property, me and my brother own that property there. You know, we know eventually we're going to do something with it. Maybe not, but, so these decisions actually impact my future as far as what we intend to do on that property. Obviously, you know, we lived there, we grew up there, and we, you know, still family lives there based on, not just because of the neighborhood, but because also the historic content and close to the sponge docks. But I don't know if we have the wherewithal or the ability to, I guess I'm speaking to the board, maybe legal could correct me, but I don't know if we have the authority to get into design requirements, quite frankly.
Where your authority would lie would be in making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for what you would want to see in that regard incorporated into the Land Development Code and the SMART Code. But my understanding is that this area is going to come under the purview of the Historic Preservation Board, or is it not going, or is that not going to be expanded? Is that to be determined?
That's to be determined, just for clarity about the project that we have going on for Greektown. It's a placemaking project, and really the outcome or the result of that project is to see what does the community actually want for the area? Do they want regulations or design requirements? Do they not want design requirements? Do they want to be in the historic district with a board, or do they not? That type of information. And basically, once that's determined, the next step is then whatever implementing plan we need to do.
Give you a prime example. If you go down Grand Boulevard, if you know which house I'm talking about, I don't care where you think it is, it's just completely out of character for that neighborhood, completely. I don't know if anybody else on the board has seen that house. And that's my fear, is that we turn the Greektown District into a And that's my fear, is that we turn the Greek Town District into a hodgepodge of, and I think the applicant has seen that house as well, and how that just somehow just reeks of, I don't belong.
I mean, I think we desperately need design requirements, but seeing as we don't have them, I think all we can do is really ask is just that the applicant, assuming that this gets approved, that they take our comments here into consideration and do everything they possibly can to try to make it blend into the context of that neighborhood more than what I'm seeing the current plans doing, quite honestly. And I'm not trying to be overly critical, but if I drive through that neighborhood and look at what I mostly see, it is a little different in character than those elevations that I'm seeing. But understanding that our decision is not predicated on that.
Yeah, and I live in the neighborhood as well, live a couple, on Athens Street, a couple houses down from Miss Pukavales, and I understand, you know, it's almost like I wish we didn't have to put things in this historic if people would just kind of, can you try a little bit? Because when you turn down and you go by the other house, I feel like this house is going to fall on top of me. Because, and it's just not in accordance with anything. We don't want to just keep seeing these things pop up, but, I mean, we can't just say we just don't like it. That's, so.
No, and I don't think we can say you're going to have to wait six months for us to get design standards in place. That's not fair.
Part of what's difficult, I think, in this particular area too, is because you did say it is in a floodplain, and, you know, the testimony here was that most of the houses are one-story, and certainly under current FEMA guidelines, that's something that has to be reconciled with the character of the neighborhood and the fact that, you know, the houses are really supposed to be elevated if they're going to be redeveloped.
I think all the houses are. When you buy one story, they got a three or four step.
So they're at least somewhat elevated? Okay.
Yeah, just to kind of go off of that, just so you have clarification, I looked at the elevations on the survey again before the meeting. They are required, they're in floodzone AE8, which means their base flood elevation is eight feet. They have to build one foot above, so they have to build it nine feet, any finished living space. So based off the elevations of the property, it kind of slopes up as you go towards the back of the property, but they have to elevate anywhere between probably four and a half to five feet in some cases to get above and built at that proper nine-foot elevation.
Okay, well, we kind of, kind of went off on our own, I guess. The public comment section of the meeting is over. We need a motion in a second so that the board can continue to discuss if they want to.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve Conditional Use Application 23-74 and Resolution 2327.
I would ask, I would ask if, in your motion, if you would also include a requirement that it may be maintained as a single-family dwelling.
Okay, and we'll include that stipulation.
And then also staff's recommendation for issuance of the permit within one year.
Can I just get clarity on single-family? Just, you can't necessarily say it can't be rented, but you're saying not two separate units is what you're looking for?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think what he's saying is the ground floor living area and the upper-story unit can't necessarily be rented as two separate spaces, but it's utilized really as a single-family residence.
I mean, is, is.
Not a full, separate living quarters on the ground story. You'd have to come back before the board to get approval of that.
So let me just make sure I understand. You're saying that you want to not let me rent out the upper unit by itself, whether it's a long-term yearly lease, like my neighbors have, they've been renting that house for 15 years. So you're saying I can't do that?
I, I mean, just speaking for myself, I would say you could, in my mind at least, you could rent the upstairs and you could use the downstairs for your family members, but you can't split them and rent them as two separate units.
Rent them both. Okay, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that. I just, also, if I could take just a second, you know, there's, there's a lot of, like Ally was saying, there's, of these WDI properties that are there, most of them have single-family dwellings on them. And you know the topography of that land over there. It starts, everything from Athens and Cedar going up east and north is all higher elevation. So yes, they can put a little bungalow up on Athens and do that. We can't. We're restricted of what we can do in looks by the elevation. And just like the house that I built, I don't think anybody in the neighborhood, and talking about the size, there's two houses behind us on Arcacia that are over 5,000 square foot each going in. Those aren't little, small bungalows, you know? And, you know, I'm not trying to say, you know, stop the growth and put bungalows in there. We just can't. In that section going from the corner of Cedar where the lot is, where our lot is toward alternate 19, it all continues to get lower in elevation. You cannot have a house, people walking up five, six stairs to get to their house, because that's what it would take unless they put in a lot of fill. So, you know, I don't think, you know, some people might not like the style of our house. We get a lot of people driving by, taking pictures of our house, stopping and taking pictures of the house. Somebody must like it. I like it, and I think that's all that matters. But, you know, I don't think any of the neighbors, nobody wants a commercial, anybody that I've talked to said they don't want a commercial property there. So, you know, I don't want to do that. And on top of that, I don't think any, anybody in Greek Town is upset that their property values went up $100,000 in the last four or five years. And then we were the start of building a house there, and since then, there's been eight houses built in Greek Town. Maybe not all to the design of the bungalow, but it, and yes, the economy's gotten better, but it has helped property values. I don't think anybody can complain about that. So, thank you.
Okay, we've got a, a motion. Are we sure what the motion says now?
Well, I think it was bullshit to approve with the added condition, besides the city's conditional requirements, the added condition that the property be only treated as a single-family residence.
And, and staff, staff can, yeah, comply with the staff recommendations, and staff can do the language to make sure that what, what we said is, is the way it would work as far as rental.
Yes.
Did we get a second on that?
I'll second it. It was.
Okay. Do we have further discussion, or?
I just think my concern was, and I think most of our concern, I mean, my house is also mixed use. I could, it's commercial. No one, I don't think up here is concerned about it being commercial property. I think there was a little mix-up with, oh my God, if this doesn't approve, it's going to be commercial property. The concern is it being rented out. You know, thanks for increasing all our property values. Jeez, but that's only my concern. I think that was, that was it.
And that was my concern as well. Because I agree, when you look at the neighborhood, growing up in the neighborhood, I don't care what the zoning is, you're not going to be putting commercial enterprises in there.
No, that's, that's not a commercial piece of property.
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Early?
Yes, and I, I say yes. I actually had the same concerns when I was going through these materials and saw the design of the house. And I was hoping, you know, that it could be more culturally influenced. But having said that, my vote is yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right. That brings us to Application 21170. Again, quasi-judicial for property located at 38652 US Highway 19 North. This one should look familiar to most of you. We've heard it twice before. There was an error in the legal description, and the project has been built and is operating. So this is kind of cleaning up the problem with the legal description. So if, we can have a fairly abbreviated staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Pat McNees, Principal Planner. This property is located at the northwest corner of US 19 and Klosterman. There's an existing car wash on the property that's operating. The, just a summary of the requests that we're talking about, this is annexation of just about an acre of property, change in the future land use map from residential office retail to commercial general, and a rezoning from commercial parkway to highway business. We did not ask the applicant to attend. We do have permission to run this application for him again. But the owner is Mr. Paul Giallo. So just to hit on the history of this, the city did adopt an annexation ordinance on October 11th, 2022. Along with that, they adopted, the board adopted a future land use map change and a zoning atlas change. The staff error was discovered when this went down to property appraiser, and that would be me. That was my error, where the wrong legal description was attached, and the property could not be annexed, the annexation could not be completed and recorded. So we are coming back to you with new ordinances. This board heard and approved this, all three of these ordinances listed up here on January 24th, 2022. And I believe, hopefully with Regina's assistance, I believe what we're going to do this evening is ask that you go ahead and approve these three new ordinances, which include repeal of the old ordinances, and incorporate the minutes from the January 24th, 2022 meeting into your approval. And do we need to take those each one at a time?
So here's, here's what I would like to do, is to read the title for each ordinance, and then have the board do two motions. One would be a motion to incorporate the testimony and minutes from the previous meetings where this was heard.
And the findings.
Yes, and findings. And then open the public hearing if anybody wants to speak on it. Nobody doesn't, close the public hearing, and then pass it on its merits. Okay? So the first one is Ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 0.92 acres, more or less, of real property located at 38652 US Highway 19 North on the northwest corner of US Highway 19 North and Klosterman Road, Application 20-171, repealing Ordinance 2022-03, providing for findings and providing an effective date.
Okay, and the parcel that we're talking about here includes both of the parcels that we previously dealt with, the billboard parcel and the remaining larger parcel, correct?
The billboard parcel, I'll take a look at it here.
Right.
Was also adopted on, on that date by the Board of Commissioners on October 11th. That adoption is good. It has not gone into effect yet, but when you complete this process, they will be able to record that annexation as well.
Okay, so this is just the parcel without the billboard?
Yeah, there's no action required on the billboard parcel.
Do you want a motion?
Okay.
I guess we've got a public comment first.
Yeah, are there any members of the public here wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, can I have a motion in seconds so we can discuss?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve 2023-12.
And incorporate.
And incorporating that, not just the minutes, the findings and the board action.
Thank you.
On that particular, whatever date that was that we, or the date.
Sorry, January 24th, 2022.
Okay, on that date.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Okay, last one. Ordinance 2023-10, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for 0.92 acres, more or less, of real property located at 38652 US Highway 19 North on the northwest corner of US Highway 19 North and Klosterman Road from Pinellas County land use designation for ROR, residential office retail, to City of Tarpon Springs land use designation CG, commercial general, Application Number 21-170, repealing Ordinance 2022-04, providing for findings and providing an effective date.
Can I have a motion in a second?
A public comment?
Oh, yes. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, can I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve 2023-10, and also to incorporate all prior findings, presentations, and the vote of this board, based on the date that the prior presentation, which was in 2020 June, what'd you say?
January 24th, 2022.
Yeah, January 24th, 2022.
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Okay, last one. Ordinance 2023-11, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for 0.92 acres, more or less, of real property located at 38652 US Highway 19 North on in the northwest corner of US Highway 19 North and Klosterman Road, from Pinellas County zoning designation CP, commercial parkway, to City of Tarpon Springs zoning designation HB, highway business, Application Number 21-170, repealing Ordinance 2022-05, providing for findings and providing an effective date.
And do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll go ahead and move to approve 2023-11, also to incorporate all prior findings, votes, presentations into the, of the, from our hearing, January.
24.
24, 2022.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll second again.
All right, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kouskoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right. My pack, you're off the hook. Now that brings us to Item 9, Amendments to the Land Development Code. This item is legislative and involves Application 22109, Hurricane Shelter Impact and Coastal High Hazard Area, Ordinance 202224 and Resolution 202326. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we'll go ahead and take these one at a time. This one is Ordinance Number 2022-24. You all reviewed this ordinance on November 28th of 2022, and then it went to the Board of Commissioners on December 12th of 2022. And if you're looking at your packet, the one change that you all recommended, for some reason, it's not struck through, I need to revise that. But at the bottom of page one of five, Section 122.12A, you all recommended a change from a 50-unit threshold to a 10-unit threshold. The Board of Commissioners did accept that. Basically, I guess I should backtrack a little bit. This ordinance covers the hurricane shelter study that is required for larger developments has been required. that is required for larger developments, has been required under current code for 50 units or more, showing that we have, that there is sufficient capacity for hurricane shelter. That's in basically your Public Facilities and Concurrents Section of your code. And it also requires, has a new section and requires design standards for it, building in the coastal high hazard area. So what you see in your packet, in red, are the changes the board made since you saw this ordinance. The main thing they did was they wanted to, to take the list of design standards out of the ordinance, make it a resolution, which I've attached for you. That's proposed Resolution 2023-26. And then refer to that, that adopted list in the code. So the idea generally is that they would be able to revise that list by resolution. It would be a little bit easier for them to come in. That would go through you as well, to revise that list of design standards, update them, you know, from time to time with a reference back to the ordinance. So we can go through this, you know, section by section if you want, or I can just answer questions about this, however you'd like to proceed.
Do, do we have specific questions for staff? Or do we want them to just run through it, section by section?
I actually do, on the list that's in the resolution. You said that there had been part of this that had been in existence for a number of years, like 15 years or something like that, when you were giving your presentation. Part of this had been in place for a while. Where, this list of things, where does that come from that they're, that's being removed?
The section 122.12 is an existing section of code. The section 149 and 149.01 are completely new.
Okay, so this list of, of 14 design standards that kind of deal with hurricane-related impacts?
Yeah. That were in the original draft ordinance.
Right, where did that list originate from? Is it based on FEMA standards, insurance regulations? Is it based, what is, what is that list based on?
It's based on, and you'll see on page one, that one of the whereas is struck. The board wanted that struck. Referring to City of St. Petersburg, we used their ordinance as somewhat of a model. They were modeled off, off of discussions and standards of, that Forward Pinellas had. So their ordinance was kind of worked through a process in coordination with Forward Pinellas. And then it was finally adopted and we kind of took a cue from that, that this, this was an approach and a list that Forward Pinellas would approve of once we adopted.
My other question, I guess, kind of, and, and I'm not sure, do you remember which meeting they had the discussion on this?
You mean the Board of Commissioners?
Commissioners, yes.
December 12th, 2022. Do, do you still want me to go through section by section on this?
Do, do we want a section by section review? Or do you just want to look at it and ask questions?
I mean, I can hit the highlights if you like.
Okay, yeah.
So on Hurricane Shelter Impact Study, we, we are going to require this study for developments of 10 units, 10 residential units or more. We have on section B, the shelter space demands. We basically changed that to cover governmental sources. We had a, we had a previous change. You'll see at the top of, of page two of five, some language struck. There was a previous code change allowing private industry sources. That is being struck. We, there's a couple of just mostly typo and, and cleanup changes on that page. Making sure we're coordinating with the Pinellas County Emergency Management Department. They are the authority that can designate and manage shelters. So that language is in there. It adds as number 13, this was in your draft before, a option for a direct payment of a fee to cover shelter costs. So that is added to the list of mitigation options. And then number 14 adds the use of coastal high hazard area design standards, which comes down to your next section. So that is a new section. Tells you what the coastal high hazard area is. It tells you what you, uses that you can and cannot have such as solid waste, hazardous waste type uses you cannot build in the coastal high hazard area. It talks about mandatory hurricane evacuation for hotel. And that makes it a little bit stronger than what we have now. We have, if you want to build a hotel and you want that extra density, you have to do a development agreement. But this, this adds a little bit more teeth that it's a mandatory evacuation requirement. The design standards, probably the biggest thing is that on section 149.01B, we had thresholds in there for 100, 200 and over 200. The board knocked that down to 50 units, 100 units and then 200 or more, I think we had. So they lowered those thresholds and we now would require building to plus three above base flood elevation for multifamily and attached, single family, which is basically townhomes. So for multifamily and townhomes, you're going to be building to BFE plus three and the next higher wind load category. So that, that was two of the big changes there. And then they also have to do these mitigated mitigation requirements. If you have 50 units, you have to provide, let's see. I think you have to provide one of the measures. If you're greater than 50, you have to provide two of the measures. And over 100, you have to provide one additional item for every 30 units, if we can keep that straight. So those standards are adopted in the resolution that's attached. The developer can offer alternative mitigation design options if, if there are some that they would like to do that are not on this list that might fit the development better or provide more protection. So that's kind of the summary of the ordinance.
Pat, do any of these changes affect the mobile home parks?
I'm sorry?
Do any of these changes affect the mobile home parks?
No, no. Well, other than if you're going to build a new mobile home park of 10 units or more.
If it were destroyed? Like, could they rebuild or does that have any effect on this or?
Could they rebuild? Yeah, they could, that are in mobile home parks.
Nothing of this is saying that they, nothing in this change is restricting?
If they are not, you know, if, if the mobile homes were below flood, they would have to build back above flood, but they would not be subject to the plus three base flood elevation requirement.
So I, I want to be clear about what the resolution is doing. So the way that I read the ordinance, it says that under 50 units, they have to provide one of the mitigated, mitigative measures listed in the ordinance, in the resolution. And over 50, they have to provide two. And then it's up to the developer to determine which of those mitigative measures they implement in their development? Is that what I'm understanding as I read this?
The, the measures would be proposed and reviewed by the TRC.
Okay.
And we would take a recommendation forward. These, remember, these are all, I mean, these are going to be site plans. So you're going to see these for multifamily and townhome. So ultimately, the, the board would approve whatever measures are proposed.
Then you also said that the developer can propose their own mitigative measures that are not provided for in that resolution, right?
Yes.
Okay. What, how, what standards or what criteria are you using to evaluate their proposals that are outside of what's listed in that resolution?
In other words, are you asking what benchmark are they providing?
Right, right.
Yeah, so there is some language here that says that the applicant will need to demonstrate that the site-specific analysis and holistic resilient design methods meet or exceed the requirements of the coastal high hazard area design standards through such methods as follows. So they basically have to provide an analysis that's, that shows that the intent of a resilient and adaptive design is met.
Okay. Because I want the board to be clear that this is, by taking it out of the ordinance, it doesn't have the same efficacy as like the rest of your land development code. So you can't necessarily make them stick to it the way you can in your land development code.
But, but if you, if you had language in there that it no less than what the certain requirements are, in other words, if, if we set the benchmark as to their minimum requirements in what we do here, I think that, is that?
See, the, the thing is, is my concern is that it's not in the ordinance. And I understand the flexibility of having it in a resolution. But you also have to understand that your land development code has higher standards for passage just on its own.
And, and I don't, and I don't know if I'd want to, I mean, we don't have the, the land currently, you know, unless somebody starts to annex that, that, that will have this many number of units. But.
Right.
But I, leave it, leaving it to the guys of the developer, it's less, it's less, you know, they're always going to try to save money in their development.
The most it's going to be with a resolution in terms of enforceability is a suggestion.
Yeah, and that's, and I, and that's, I have, I find that problematic.
Yeah, legally, you're going to have a hard time, a harder time enforcing it than you would if you left it in your land development code. So that's kind of what I, I was kind of getting here is trying to see how stringent the, the city wanted to be with the applications of that, those mitigative measures. That's part of why I was asking where they came from.
Yeah, well, I will say this. The Board of Commissioners deliberated over this for some time in December. They finally were able to agree on lowering the thresholds. My observation, this is my observation personally, is they did not completely reach consensus on how to deal with the list of design criteria. Some of them didn't like them, some did. Tell you the truth, I gave Renee a couple of options to deal with it. One of them suggested by mayor was to have this, do, do this very thing. Take it out of the code, make it a list and have the, the TRC and then followed by the boards decide whether the intent of, of this, this section was met. You know, with each individual project with what is proposed. So, so this is the direction we went to try to, to try to go ahead and wrap this up and get something in effect.
I do have another question along those lines because you had mentioned that there really isn't necessarily the land available.
But we could annex and that's.
You could annex, but also if there were an event where there would be a need for substantial redevelopment from the ground up. Yeah. Is, is this going to apply? Or are you going to have a rebuild the box ordinance?
I would say this would apply just like any other section of the land development code.
Okay.
You know, obviously each project would, would, if you're talking about if it's destroyed in a storm.
Either a storm, fire, whatever the case may be. But just the prop, the property was there and now it's gone.
Right.
Because of some sort of disaster or whatever, right?
As opposed to a deliberate redevelopment, which we do have now.
Right.
And we treat, you know, completely redevelopment of a property, we treat as, you know, a new development. But.
Do you have in, in your code of ordinances where it says that property owners can rebuild exactly what they had before?
We have standard non-conforming use and non-conforming structure language, which is standard 50%.
Okay.
So that's what we have.
So there is a way to structure your code if you wanted to allow for them to redevelop basically exactly what they have now. So they can build exactly the building footprint and not comply with those standards in the, in the event of like a hurricane or, or other disaster like that. Not every community wants to do that because a lot of times if it's property that has suffered those types of losses, you don't want to repeat those losses. So usually the preference is to go with something like this that would require them then, when they rebuild, to rebuild to the higher standards. You know, but it's, my concern is that, that the mitigative measures that you're trying to put in place aren't going to have the, the same type of legal enforceability in the resolution and the way you structured it now as if it was in the ordinance.
Without a benchmark.
But this is a policy decision that you all have to make.
I, I think we, I think benchmarks are going to, I think having benchmarks in there probably is necessary, in my opinion. Because wherever, wherever the bar is, I would assume a developer's got to try to lower the bar. And, and, and so we've got to, we've got to establish the bar. They want to build above the bar, that's fine. But, but I, I think there's got to be criteria in place that, that, that they would have to follow instead of suggest.
So at my hearing, you would rather see the criteria back in the ordinance?
Were you, was, was what you were saying that you did not feel like you had a mandate from the BOC to go either way with that part of it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so.
There was no consensus either way.
So we can't take clear direction at this point by what they're going to approve or not approve because we don't know?
We don't know.
Yeah, okay.
But you can certainly.
Yeah. The conversation needs to be around how enforceable you want these standards to be.
And currently, Pat, how enforceable is the coastal high hazard area requirements? Do we annex them into our codes and, and regulations somehow or?
They, you mean our current code?
Right.
Yeah, we really, I mean, you know, probably the main thing you guys see or would see with respect to coastal high hazard is changes in future land use and density. Not being able to raise the density, you know, and, and the effect on hotels that want to come in for extra density doing development agreement. That is kicked in by if. kicked in by if the, if the, if they're in the coastal high-hazard areas. So, that that's about it.
Just a a question that comes to mind that's sort of on another subject, but sort of not, is that Living at Home Act or whatever it was that that we discussed the last time. If somebody came in on a piece of industrial property that was within the high-hazard area, what does that do to all the requirements?
As far as if this were adopted?
Yeah.
They, yeah, so they would have to comply with this.
They would still have to comply.
The two things that that act overrides, for lack of a better term, are the height and the you, they get the highest density in the city, which in our city is only fifteen units per acre. I say only, but in the bigger world, that's not that much, so. But after that, they have to comply with your codes is kind of the short answer. And you can certainly recommend that the board put those criteria back in the ordinance, if that's what you.
Wait, and Pat, and I don't know if this is related to this or not, but during, in the workshop, remember when we were going through, and I think it was, we got to that cult, the the high hazard, coastal high-hazard one, and Renee was like, we don't have to put this in at all. Is this related to this at all, or do you remember what I'm talking about with that whole section?
Yeah.
There was a change made, and then at first, everyone was like, oh, that's good. And then Renee was like, we don't even need this section.
Yeah, that was adopted from Forward Pinellas as a way to mitigate.
For future land use, I think.
Yeah, and Ally, you can help me remember as a way to allow higher density outside the special area plan.
Because I'm not sure.
Under certain circumstances and with certain mitigative measures. So, yeah, going back to the comprehensive plan, that was adopted after Renee left the city. That was adopted to be consistent with some standards Forward Pinellas had, but it was greatly expanded to cover the whole city. And what Renee was saying is we can go back to what it used to be as far as raising density, back to the Activity Center where it was really, really started. This, this is really addressing just the physical design, mostly design standards of a building at a site when it's being built, no matter, you know, what density it is.
I can only speak for me, but but, I mean, I think I'd like to see it back in the ordinance.
Yeah, I think as as Council said, that galvanizes it to the best degree that it really can't be extruded or expanded upon or minimized in any way possible. It's it's in stone.
Okay.
I don't know, I I guess it needs to be part of the of the motion when when we do what?
And I'd last like to ask the attorney, should they then now make a motion on both the ordinance and the resolution?
What I will do is I will read the ordinance by title, open the public hearing. Obviously, we don't have any public here for the record, but we still, we still open it just for the, just to comply. And then you can make your motion to recommend this with the mitigative measures included. Yes. All right, so ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash, or twenty twenty-two, sorry, dash twenty-four. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Eight, Amending Section 122-12, Hurricane Shelter Impact Study, and Article Nine, Adding Section 149, Coastal High-Hazard Area Development Regulations, and Section 149.01 Coastal High-Hazard Area Design Standards, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and Providing for the Effective Date of this ordinance.
Okay, and we can open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this meeting. And I need a motion in a second so the board can discuss.
Okay, I'll go. I promote to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four with the with the, uh, uh, design criteria back in place. I think that would, that that would suffice as far as a motion is concerned.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, so that brings us to the next one, right?
Do you want them to act on the resolution or not?
They don't need to because the, because of how they want it included back in the ordinance. Do you want me to go ahead and read the title? Of the next one?
Sure.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh-eight, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Fifteen, Fees and Charges, Sections Two Forty-Six, Fees, and Two Forty-Seven, Charges, to Update Existing Fees and Establish New Fees for Professional Review Services, Drainage and Stormwater Review, Utility Service Review, and Temporary Use Fees for Mobile Food Vendors, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and Providing for the Effective Date of this ordinance.
And so this ordinance is to update or actually add fees for professional review services that the cost of which the city is incurring right now on a regular basis, especially for stormwater and some utility engineering review services. So, what we have here is revision of Section Two Forty-Six, just referring to a new table that's been added as Section Two Forty-Six Point Oh Two. So, those references have been added. Fee has been added for mobile food vendor applications. The table in new Section Two Four Six Point Oh Two includes mainly stormwater and utility fee reviews, oh, sorry, review fees, and then all the other services would be at cost. So there are infrequent services we incur like a survey or a review of a plat or a traffic study, traffic engineer review of a traffic study. Those would be at cost. The rest of these are pretty frequent, regular review fees by outside consultants. And these, these these would be the fees established for that. And then just a clarification on Section Two Forty-Seven, that those are charges to printing and copying. Are there any questions on these?
Is this gonna be passed before October first?
It's on schedule to be, go to the Board of Commissioners for two
Okay.
readings in September.
Okay. For the board's information, I'm asking that because after October first, they will have to include an economic impact statement and and analysis of the economic impact to businesses in the community.
Okay, any questions of staff?
You know, I mean, I always got a question. I got a, my question is with regard to tree removal. And maybe this, maybe this is not the right place or whatever, but one of the things that that kind of frostby is when I see a developer come in, clear-cut everything, and just put in, you know, small caliber trees, did replacement, they remove all the bigger, bigger trees. And I don't know if there's a fee for that with regard to size and stuff like that. So if it's, it's more onerous to remove a big oak tree financially, then maybe they would want to keep it. And 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 so I don't know if that that that's in here or not. Maybe this is the wrong place to bring that up. Because I've seen developers come in, you know, it's cheaper for them to clear-cut all the trees and plant little ones, you know, and and make a donation to a tree bank than to try to redesign around, you know, beautiful oak trees or whatever. And 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 that actually adds, I think, character to to neighborhood. And so, you know, that's, I don't know if that would, you know, I just want to make it more onerous for them if they decide to do that. And I don't know if that is in here.
That that is, those standards are in your tree ordinance. And, yeah, you're right, so we do have an inch-for-inch replacement requirement, or they have to pay into the tree fund. That ordinance does need some work. I will tell you that we do have an urban forestry management program underway. Our municipal arborist is leading that effort. And we've heard a lot of feedback of what you're talking about on keeping some of these larger trees and even, you know, installing some larger trees using newer methods than there were when that ordinance was originally passed. So we will be looking at that section of code. But those, those would not be in this section for fees for services.
I saw tree permit fees, and I just thought that.
Okay.
Well, if, yeah, we'd like to be involved when
Yeah.
when it gets to that point because I I know the ordinance does address it, but it's 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 way too easy to pay the tree fund and and take the big trees out instead of working with the site to to make a more interesting project.
Can we make the fees any higher? This is as high as they can go.
I want the fee well worth them redesigning.
These, and, yeah, just, just to touch on that, we did work with our, our stormwater consultant, with our utility staff on these fees. So this is kind of what they came up with looking at other ordinances. It's obviously not their actual hourly rate for each project, but that's how we came up with these.
Are they set by statute, the fees, or is it like how they measure in other areas, or?
Yeah, I.
I was just kidding, I didn't really.
Usually, they're based on on the cost to the city to administer the program.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see anything here that looks over the top in terms of keeping somebody from developing a piece of property. It's it's very reasonable. Okay, I I guess we'll open the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak, approach the microphones.
I think I saw a hand over there.
Yeah, yeah.
The ghost of the old middle school.
Seeing none, uh, can I have a motion in a second?
Somebody want to make a motion?
Somebody, anybody?
Anybody?
No, we're looking for the correct number.
Is it, um, motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh-eight? Was the correct one?
Or twenty-six? Ah.
It was twenty twenty-three dash oh-eight.
Oh, wait, yeah, it's up on the board.
And I'll second that motion.
So, that was your motion? Motion to
Francis?
Approve.
Yeah, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-eight.
Thank you.
In a second.
In a second. And is there any board discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, that brings us down to the last one.
Okay, I can read that
Okay.
title only. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh-nine, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Sections Eighty-Two, Final Development Plan Review, Two Ten Dash, or Two Ten Point Oh Five, Site Plans, Expirations and Extensions, and Section Two Forty-One Point Oh Oh, Definitions, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, and Providing for the Effective Date of this ordinance.
So, this ordinance is kind of trying to close a loophole a little bit. This was another ordinance that the Board of Commissioners wanted. Had expressed some concerns about, or another section of the code. Basically, the thrust of of this whole section is to require applicants to come back once they have their site plan approval or whatever approval they get from the Board of Commissioners, that they go ahead, apply for their building permit, and get their building permit for whatever they're doing. Right now, the code requires application for a permit within one year of these approvals. Somebody applies, they don't respond, or it doesn't get issued, and time drags out. And it's kind of open-ended. This would require the applicant to go ahead and obtain a permit within one year of the, just to hit a couple of these preliminary plan developments. You all see those, and then the Board of Commissioners sees those. This would require the applicant to get approval of the final plan development within one year of board approval. Do you want to ask something now, or?
I'll wait till you're done.
Okay. And then, once they get final development plan approval or site plan approval, they would have one year to pull that permit. If you look, I think these are not, pages are not numbered for some reason. If you look on the third page, it's Section Two Ten Oh, uh, sorry, Section Eighty-Two.
Yeah, Eighty-Two.
E. Basically, you have to pull that building permit, and it has to remain in active status. So for site plans, it's very similar. You have to pull the building permit, and it's got to remain active and under review. Now, we still have the provision for extensions. They can request an extension of another year. We have updated that to say they can request an extension if they've applied for a permit. So, then they need to go ahead and pull that permit within that second year. So they can have up to two years. Sometimes building permits, there are issues, side issues that that affect these things. And sometimes there are delays. They still have that option of extending, requesting that extension to allow for up to two years. So that's kind of the thrust of this.
I guess you you answered my question because my concern was sometimes dealing, dealing with bureaucracy, it's a slow roll, and 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 it may be not the fault of the the applicant trying to get his permit, and it's the slow roll of the bureaucracy involved. And I'd hate to see it penalize somebody when it's not all their fault. So the fact that you addressed, requested extension, I think answers my concern, or addresses my concern.
And I will tell you, staff did go back and forth a little bit on this. We originally had two years with a with a extension, with the extension going to three because it does, you know, we we don't want the building department to be unduly, I don't know, not burdened, but we don't, we don't want a feeling of rushing a building permit through. We want, we do want to allow the time and the the scope of review to be what it's supposed to be. So we have gone back and forth on on the amount. So we have gone back and forth on the amount. We were kind of generally thinking two years. So it could be one, and then a one-year extension, or if, you know, you just wanted to allow the two years without having to go through the extension process, that could be an option also.
I guess my comment is I would hate to see it two years because that allows the applicant to drag their feet as opposed to making them be more inclined to get their stuff done on a timely basis. And the fact that, obviously, as a city staff, if you see that the slow roll is a result of the, you know, the city's, you know, the building department may be overwhelmed and not be able to get to plans for a while and between changes and everything, a year could go by. As long as the city is liberal with its extensions, I just don't, I see that as...
Yeah, that completely makes sense, make people think they're on a tighter schedule, but be flexible if they have a good reason for needing more time. Any other questions? So we're back to public comments. Seeing none, can I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve Land Development Code Amendment 23-85, or it is 2023-9, as far as the development order expiration dates.
And I would second that with the one-year application and one-year extension by necessity.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus? Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, I believe that brings us to staff comments.
Just a reminder, you will have a comprehensive plan workshop upstairs in the media room on Wednesday, August 30th. That starts at 6 o'clock. And we'll be getting you some materials for that later, a little later in the week. That's it.
One question that you could comment on for me perhaps is just given that, whatever the act was that the state passed, what is it?
Live local.
Live local, yeah. Have you heard anything further about that or any contacts from developers trying to do things based on that or anything since we met last?
We have heard from one developer that...
There's two of them.
May not submit for discussion at TRC. We indicated the next TRC meeting as a potential discussion, but we have not seen any application for discussion yet. So if you're interested in that, I would say just check those monthly TRC agendas.
I will tell you all when I moved here, much to my chagrin, I had to move, I had to remove a large oak tree. And it killed me to do it, but I will say they sent out an arborist and I had to plant two trees in order to make up for the loss of that tree and trees of size, which fortunately I did, they were, although to me it didn't seem right. I planted palms, good-sized palms, but they weren't oak trees. I thought it was pretty neat that they came out and said, you know, this is what you have to do, and checking on what I was doing, I liked it. However, I, she said, "Oh, it's great, you're planting two palm trees." It's not the same. So anyway.
That's why the tree ordinance needs to be revisited.
It does.
That comes under us, doesn't it?
I don't know, does it come under us?
Revitalizing the tree ordinance, would that be before us?
Oh, sure. Land development, all the land development codes are going to be coming through you.
I know that in the past eight or so years, they did have some legislation to kind of restrict what cities can and cannot do, and I don't know if your ordinance was ever changed to be in line with that or...
I would say no.
I also think they did walk it back, though, a couple of years after they enacted it.
They did, I think.
Living impacts, they probably need to allow...
Yep.
More difficult to clear cut.
It was quite a few years ago, but when I dealt with it on one project, palm trees were only worth 50% of the value of a shade tree. So you actually had to plant more palm trees if you wanted to do it with palm trees, at least at that time.
They only made me plant two palm trees and it just didn't seem like enough. It was more money for me, but I meant it was just the whole system I thought maybe was insufficient. Because the oak I removed was probably, was huge, but it was dying, so anyway.
Anybody have further board comments before we adjourn? I've got 8:21 and we stand adjourned. Y'all gave me my gavel back. I feel powerful.